Good afternoon and welcome to the December 1st, 2021 meeting of the PG CPS Board of Education Climate Change Action Plan Focus Workgroup Meeting. My name is Pamela Boozer-Struther and I am the District 3 Board of Education member and I serve as co-chair of this workgroup with parent volunteer Joseph Jakuta, representing the Climate Action Parents of Prince George's County. I would like to thank Joseph K. Colzoni, David Smith, and Valerie Urban for the work that they do each week in helping to plan our meetings. Today, we will be discussing the topics of land use, stormwater management, tree planting, and outdoor classrooms. And this meeting happens to be a milestone in our work of our data collection in for our key mission areas. We welcome all workgroup members, special guests, and the viewers of the meeting, and thank you for your dedication to this climate action work. You can review past recordings of meetings at www.pgcps.org backslash climate. I would like to call this meeting to order and ask for a motion and second for approval of today's agenda.
So move.
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Extentions? All right, the agenda is approved. Next, I ask for a motion and second for approval of the November 17th, 2021 meeting minutes. May I have a second of a motion and second?
I move that we approve the November 17th, 2021 minutes.
A second.
Thank you. So all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Extentions? All right, thank you so much. Today, it's my pleasure to welcome to the meeting PG CPS CEO Dr. Monica Goldson. My conversations about a vision of a PG CPS climate action plan began with Dr. Goldson in early 2019. I remember it, I'm sure it was one of those moments where Dr. Goldson thought, oh, here comes a board member with a big idea. And because I remember I was driving, I was listening to NPR and I heard what was a really interesting report on about 15 years into Penn State University Sustainability Plan. And they were talking a lot about having 60 campus buildings, you know, about 60,000 students. You know, and I was thinking, oh, my gosh, PG CPS for 200-plus buildings, we're 130-plus thousand students, 20,000 employees. We have a much bigger carbon footprint and, you know, we, at the time, very concerned about our school construction and the condition of our buildings, which of course meant energy use. And so at the time, I remember sitting down with Dr. Goldson and saying, hey, do we have someone who's overseeing sustainability? And, and she said, no, no one really specifically in that, that role. And I said, well, I have this idea about, you know, maybe, you know, about this concept of a work group. And she said, go for it. And so at the same time, parents and students were for, were coming to board meetings saying, hey, we really need this PG CPS to have a plan because legislation, funding is coming. Climate action is finally getting the attention that it desperately needs and PG CPS needs to be ready too. So I want to say thank you to Dr. Goldson for that support and I want to welcome you here today to, to make some remarks.
Thank you so much for having me and for just being a visionary. So when it's big ideas, Board Member Boozer-Strather, I just want you to know it matters when it actually comes to fruition. So I wanted to take this quick moment to say thank you to all 25 members, though I know some are missing today. You have volunteered your time every two weeks since September. And you've spent hours listening to information, learning, and finding ways that we can be a better PG CPS. Now, I do know that there's still a lot of hard work ahead because you have to craft the summary of what you heard. And then what we need to do to move PG CPS to a different type of organization, one that's sustainable, resilient, and will be driven to really focus on what that carbon footprint looks like and leaves behind for many years to come. So I appreciate already the work that you're going to do there. But we all know and admit that we have to move from identifying specific days in the year that we acknowledge, like Arbor Day or Grow Green Day, and really be conscious about our environment and creating a sustainable school environment that we learn in and that we work in every day. And it starts first by the way we do business, how we produce energy in our schools, how we're able to save, and how our students view the environment and what we need to do to help them to become good stewards, not only when they're with us, but also when they leave us. So I firmly believe our new strategic plan, which we call Transformation 2026, outlines the, the strategic imperatives that we will be able to use to carry out this new change and to do what we need to do differently and to do it better than ever before. So I look forward to receiving the systemic goals that we'll need to accomplish over the next couple of years and beginning to identify very specific staff members who will help us into leading us into this new era. So thank you for all you do. I am going to stick around a little bit for this meeting, so I'm not going to jump off immediately. I appreciate you all and look forward to that final report sometime in March, April. I'm just trying to plant the seed for hopefully it'll be here soon, so we can incorporate it in our upcoming budget. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Goldson. Really appreciate it. And I think we all look forward to the continued work together. This has been incredible partnership of community experts with PG CPS staff, experts and our students. And I, you know, could see our, our students here today. I see that Brianna, Nathan, and Jabari are all, all with us. And I, I'm sure they're, you know, appreciate as much as we do how your commitment to, to our students. So at this point, I'd like to turn our agenda over to our administrative announcements around our work to Kate and Joseph to discuss a couple of items before we move into Marita's presentation.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer-Strather, and thank you, Dr. Goldson, for those wonderful words. The, the first announcement I wanted to make is that our next meeting is December 15th. This, I guess, would be, we'd call a wrap-up of fact-finding. We will be answering any sort of loose questions, going over the, what the workgroups, the sub-workgroups have come up with by that period. Kate will get into more of the details of the workgroup scheduling. And following that, we will have resumed monthly meetings in January to review drafts of the plan. We haven't scheduled it yet, but we are looking at also having two stakeholder meetings during that time period. One, again, just for students to allow students to have their voice heard, and then one for the public at large. So stay tuned for that. And if you did have any additional questions that have not been answered, though, we're going to focus on them in the conversations. But, you know, maybe there was something you had, a question you had about transportation, but you're on the building's workgroup. Feel free to add them to the list. I guess it would mostly be directed at PG CPS staff, but it could also be for our guests as well. Any questions on that? Okay, the other thing I wanted to make sure y'all were aware of, and we've talked about this the past few meetings, is that the, the county council also has a climate action planning process that is going to essentially deal with everything that is, goes beyond everything but the schools. So that process, as far as public engagement wraps up today, today is the last day to submit comments. They, all of the public meetings have been held, but one more data felt their survey. I, I put in a link to where that information can be found. I highly encourage everyone to fill it out because we obviously cannot achieve zero emissions in Prince George's County of every piece of the puzzle's not doing its part. And a lot of what the county will be doing will affect what PG CPS can do. So the survey, I think, took a few minutes for me to fill out. And I know that we'll hear a little bit more from Nathan, who's going to talk about his experience filling it out as a student. Any questions there? Okay, I will turn it over to Nathan.
All right. Hi, all. My name is Nathan Gadera, and I'm a junior from Oxnell High School, and I'm one of the student representatives in this workgroup. And I just wanted to share a little, a little bit about the public comment meeting last week and my general impression of the climate action plan so far. So I didn't attend the entire public comment meeting last week, but I was able to get in for some of it. And for the duration that I was in it, I heard a lot of good comments and concerns and a lot of great suggestions. It was a lot of things I hadn't thought about, so it's definitely been a learning process. And after attending that meeting and really just participating in, in everything, it can definitely be said that there are a lot of people from different backgrounds and expertise that are ready to take action and create change, which makes me feel like the climate action plan so far is moving in the right direction. And like I said, as I participated in this whole process, I've been exposed to a lot of different issues and perspectives that I haven't been, been aware of. And it's created a big learning experience for me, much like how the county and even the nation is going to have to reevaluate what it knows and like what we know, and then learn how to operate differently. That's about all I have to say. So, thank you.
So before we really get going on the agenda, I was just going to mention that our subcommittee process is getting underway. You may have seen a few invitations and schedules for subcommittee meetings. Our goal for the subcommittee is to really take one meeting to review all of the information that's been talked about, discussed, and collected. We're going to do our best to consolidate that and package it in a way that's usable for the discussion. And then we're going to use a, an impact effort matrix to try to plot efforts related to that topic over the next, over the timeframe of the plan, and then, and then use that to offline, be able to start building recommendations and an action plan that we can then present to the full workgroup on the, at the next meeting. So, so it's a lot to do with the subcommittees, but please be responsive to scheduling, and then we'll get that done so we can really get a move on. The, I know Joseph, Pamela, Board Member Boozer-Strather, and I met a couple of weeks ago to do some backwards planning on this process. And our idea was to be able to try and have this totally finalized and finished to be able to promote for Earth Day next year. You can look online and see our effort. I don't know if David, you can provide the, the link, or maybe I can. But that means that there's going to be an initial draft in January. And then, and then as Joseph mentioned, there's going to be a couple of public input meetings. There's going to be some subcommittee briefings or committee briefings to the board. And for additional input and refinement, so we can have that greater public input session and then finalized by the beginning of April, so it can go into a production phase or mid-March to go into a production phase. So I don't know, Board Member Boozer-Strather, if you want to mention anything else related to that. But if you have not signed up for a subcommittee, please do so because we're going to, those are getting underway in the next week or so.
Yeah, thank you so much, Kate, Joseph, and Nathan. I got to overlap with you in that meeting last week, and it was great to hear your voice in that. And I appreciated that the, that the county recognized PG CPS student leadership. We had students from Gwen, Gwen Park High School, Eleanor Roosevelt, I think we're also in that particular public session. And I, of course, was PG CPS proud of every, everyone for offering their comments. And Kate, I guess I would just say in reflection of where we're now, it's, we're going to be in a different, very different type of work mode around drafting. So this will be much more email communication-focused, sharing of Google Docs, and possibly more one-on-one check-ins as we each get, move our subgroup data into these actionable goals and timelines. And I did want to note that, again, the county action plan also provides us with a very good visual framework of a, of a document of how we are going to present this to, to the, to the public. So I'm grateful that, that the county is kind of a step, that we're kind of following the county a little bit because we're learning a lot through how to interact with the public and, and put our, put the goals out there. So with that, I'm going to turn the agenda over to Marita Roos, who of course has been part of our workgroup this entire time. And many of you know her from her position with the Neighborhood Design Center. And she has recently retired and getting back to her, you know, I guess you're getting back to all of your consulting and sustainable landscape architecture and the projects that you want to work on. So we wish you the best in that transition. And I personally am grateful to Marita. We, it's, we have a, a long history that came back together in Prince George's County, totally unexpectedly. I met Marita actually when I was in college and lived in different cities. I was mostly here. Marita was in Philadelphia and became friends. And I learned about the work she did in landscape architecture that I, I had just really hadn't considered native planting. I grew up in Western Pennsylvania. I didn't even, I couldn't even identify flowers. I mean, this, you know, this has been a long, long journey for me. And Marita has been there the whole way. And then we came back together in Prince George's County in our interest in students and PG CPS and, and our, our, me as a parent and, and ultimately a board member and Marita's work in the community. So I just want to give personal thanks to Marita for her commitment to, to the students of PG CPS. All right, take it away, Marita.
Well, thank you, Pamela. I must say, it's been pretty amazing watching your evolution as well. So anyway, thank you. So I need to share my screen. Hang on a sec. Okay, y'all see that? And can y'all hear me? Okay, see a nods. I lost everybody's faces in the meantime. All right, a few of you back. Okay, so, um, yeah, so we have some great, great guests with us today that I am privileged to know through, through my work, mostly on the treating and teaching program, but also on some sustainable stormwater management. That all of, all of our guests today are just so dedicated to Prince George's Schools and sustainability and really putting forth some amazing initiatives. So I want to welcome everybody. And you'll get a chance to hear from most of them throughout this presentation. I'll call on people and if, Eric, how, how are you? I don't know you very well, but glad you're here. And hope you can say a few words when you're up. So I'll get started. Today's presentation is really looking at what the good initiatives are that schools are already doing in Prince George's County. I mean, we are already doing a lot of really great things that really we should be getting a lot more attention for than we are in terms of sustainable stormwater management, native plantings, specifically tree plantings, as well as, you know, hundreds, literally, of plantings that go into the schools every year through the Growing Green with Pride program, for instance. And the Training and Teaching Program, which is just such an awesome initiative. And we have several people here representing that program. So I want to get into it by talking about why stormwater management is so essential and why for schools. And one key reason is that schools, you know, really by their programmatic nature are just not, they have a lot of impervious cover. Really up to 80% or more impervious cover if you count compacted turf fields, which pretty much are stormwater runoff generators. But you've got parking lots, you've got rooftops, you've got sidewalks. And that impervious cover really tends to increase over time. We've added temporary buildings to our schools. We've compacted turf. At the same time, budgets have been cut, expertise has been lost, as we heard from Sam earlier. The year, grounds maintenance people have just, they just aren't as many people with the expertise as the artificial playing fields have increased. So generally, although we are doing some really good things, we've, there's some things that are lost over time, just inevitably, as well as, you know, the way we develop and the, the way that schools are, are operated. It's just kind of natural that there's a lot of impervious cover, a lot of stormwater runoff. And they're often, you know, pretty hot places. Just have an example of a slide you can get from PG Atlas. If you turn on the woodland canopy layer, you can see how the schools fare with respect to the rest of the community. So I want to start with one school in particular, Mary Harris Mother Jones Elementary in Delphi, built in 2001, I think, on 10 acres of land. And about four acres of that is impervious surface. So Mary Harris, Mother Jones has had some issues over the years in terms of stormwater, as you can see. So there's reasons for that. Just trees have been cut down. There's clay layers underneath the soil. But it's, it's really presented some issues. In 2018, yeah, the Neighborhood Design Center was able to engage stormwater maintenance and consulting. And we walked the school with Sam back at the time. And we had a volunteer designer, an engineer and landscape architect from Stormwater Maintenance Consulting through our Community Design Works program. It assisted us with this plan for sustainable stormwater management at Mary Harris Mother Jones. And what we saw, although there were some, there are some significant issues with water puddling, muddy water flowing around the school entrances. Sam, I know that there's been some work done at Mother Jones since this time to remedy some of these issues. But the reason I'm showing this is just to share with y'all that this could be a pretty comprehensive way of looking at schools. Stormwater Maintenance Consulting came up with a plan that looked at runoff from the parking lots. You can see some green areas on the parking islands there. There's a fire retention. Currently, right now, a lot of the school water goes into storm drains and then to a wet pond at the bottom of the school, which is actually pretty nice and used as an educational tool. But there could be more. There could be more upslope, for example, where the water actually a lot of the runoff generates. So you can do a lot of things in order to hold the runoff in place. Plantings and bio-retention areas and tree plantings and lots of different things. So it's really a kind of a, a green infrastructure approach to managing stormwater at schools. And this is something that, of course, could be applied everywhere. There's not a single one of the 208 schools that wouldn't benefit from an approach like this.
And I think, more importantly, this is a school that we attempted to, when we built the school, to provide this type of stormwater runoff, and we didn't get it right. So this, this is a prime example of maybe we need to take a look at when we're building schools, take a better look at how we're doing things because this particular model has a tendency, and I have seven of these models, they have tendencies for the water to puddle in the same places at all the schools. So maybe some type of evaluation of the site plan before we begin construction on our new schools would help us avoid this, this type of issue in the first place. That this school is built on, in Cool Springs, there are six springs that run underneath this property and in the neighborhood. So we're battling a, a water table that is helping cause some of these issues. We may have been able to avoid that had we looked at, looked at the site like you've looked at it prior to construction and included, included some of this in the construction process.
Great. Thank you very much, Sam. Yeah, and that certainly underscores the point that a lot of these schools are built on very challenging sites also. It's not necessarily prime land that is given over to the schools, so even more reason to be cautious about how, how they're built. So one of the things that is going on, most, most of you probably already know about the Clean Watershed Partnership, Clean Water Partnership and their partnership with the county to manage stormwater in a more sustainable way. So Clean Water Partners Goals Program, there are other programs that CWP does for the schools program. They've been working in the schools for, I'm not sure how many years. Maybe Eric, you can help out here.
Sure. Yeah, so we've been partnered with the Department of the Environment since 2016, I think, was probably the official day. Although I think construction and everything didn't begin until 2017. And then with that partnership was also the schools program. So 2017 was when that began. I think we probably finished the first one in probably 2017 as well. I've been on the maintenance end of things since 2017 and then recently moved into project management or program management. So that's sort of my background. But yeah, so for the last five or six years, we've been working with schools. We put in bio-retentions and then partner with the different green teams at the schools to conduct programs for the students, to put in plants or kind of show how bio-retention works, different things like that. Another, you know, Ariel with Anacostia Watershed Society helps follow up with a lot of these bio-retentions and things that we install and then comes through with outdoor classrooms and kind of follows through with the green team and, and, you know, creates those educational experiences as well. So we're really proud of what we've been doing with the schools thus far and look forward to continue that.
Yeah, it's, it's, I think it's an incredible, incredibly conceived program. And it's installed so many of these. This is, I'm taking last fall at Dora Kennedy. So you can see the, essentially the structure of how a green infrastructure bio-retention pond looks. So it's got planted sides. It's got a bottom that filters water. Sometimes it's separated. The drainage, as you can see here. But this takes pretty much all the drainage from what I can see from the two parking lots that are adjacent to this bio-retention pond. And of course, many of these bio-retention ponds in green infrastructure that CWP has built also have an associated outdoor classroom. So Ariel from, is here from the Anacostia Watershed Society, as Eric mentioned. Ariel is managing the Training and Teaching Program in the schools. Ariel, you feel like talking?
Sure, absolutely. Thanks, Marita. And thank you to everyone for having me today. And yeah, I just want to add on to that a little bit. Like Eric said, you know, the Training and Teaching Program is really a complement to the Clean Water Partnership Schools Program, which is installing the stormwater maintenance facilities to really manage the stormwater. And when that program was first conceived of back in 2016, a number of us who are on the call today, you know, got together and really wanted to make sure that how can we really leverage the building of that infrastructure and involve the students and the teachers and the building supervisors in citing those stormwater practices on the school? So, you know, involving them and figuring out, obviously, there's an engineering perspective to where they need to go, but, you know, where do they line up for a fire drill? Or where, you know, where are the best places to cite those facilities? So making sure that the school communities were really involved in the design process. And then also, once the stormwater maintenance facilities, the bio-retentions were installed, how can we help the schools really use those as a teaching tool? So that's hence the treating the stormwater and then teaching using those features as a teaching tool. Because what, what an amazing opportunity that they're having these facilities right on their school grounds, where this is a real-life solution that the county is putting in. How can we make sure that, you know, people understand why it's there and what it's, what, what it's doing and how it's contributing in a positive way to improving water quality? So, you know, there are a couple of different components of treating and teaching. One is the outdoor classroom, so making sure that there is some basic infrastructure. One is the outdoor classroom, so making sure that there is, um, basic infrastructure and facilities outside so that teachers can take the kids out, and there are, you know, places for them to sit, to do a lesson outside. There's a whiteboard that they can write on, things like that. As well as making sure that the teachers and building supervisors, and then, of course, ultimately, the students have the content knowledge to understand what they're seeing, what it is, how it works. And so, yes, you can see here some of the pictures of the outdoor classroom, so the schools apply to get an outdoor classroom, so the schools that are eligible are schools that have received a bio-retention through the Clean Water Partnership. So when the school receives a bio-retention, then they have the opportunity to also apply to get an outdoor classroom, again, to complement that, um, bio-retention, so that they have the resources that they need to use it as a teaching tool. So you can see some of the ones that we've done here, one at Parkdale, with some seating and a whiteboard. You can see at, um, Mount Pelear, that one was kind of a revamp, so sometimes it's a, a new thing that's built at the school, and sometimes it's kind of a revamp of something that's already there, so you can see like that Mount Pelear, they did have a picnic table and some raised beds, but there was, we did kind of a, a revamp there. And then you can see some work in the courtyard at, at Glen Ridge. So they're all customized, so when the schools apply, they're paired with the design team, so some with Neighborhood Design Center, and we have some other design partners as well that then work with the school to figure out, you know, what are their needs, what do they want? And then, uh, you know, we work to figure out what we can, what we can do to meet those needs. Um, and on the next slide, you can see that the outdoor classrooms are one component of the program, making sure that schools have some infrastructure outside to be able to use, to help better facilitate using the, um, the schoolyard itself as a teaching tool. But then also making sure that we're doing training and professional development for both the teachers and the building supervisors, so they understand, you know, what is stormwater, what is this stormwater facility that's on our school grounds? How can we use it, you know, as a teaching tool with our students to learn about the plants that are growing in it, to learn about, you know, water filtration, and how is that ultimately connected to water quality, right? That's obviously the, the whole goal of all of these facilities is to reduce stormwater runoff into our rivers into the Chesapeake Bay, so we, one of the core components of the program is we also bring out the teachers and the building supervisors. We bring them out on the river, we take them out on the boat, so they can really see the river and they can see, you know, what happens when we don't manage stormwater, right? What is the bigger picture here? Why are we doing this work? And that's been really meaningful, um, for both, again, teachers and building supervisors to really see the full cycle of it. It's not just, you know, we're getting something on our school grounds, and now we have something else we need to take care of, or, or whatever, whatever it may be, but really fitting it into the, the bigger picture, so. Yeah, so those are some of the, um, components of.
Yeah, I think just really important to, um, stress that this is, you know, this is multiple audiences, this is, people are participating at so many levels, you know, it's students, it's teachers, it's the principals, so all the way up through the schools, facilities, as well as, you know, into the community, the pri- the parents, the residents. So this is like, takes a village for sure, for every school. Slides don't want to move. All right, not without its challenges, however. Want to stress the positive, but there are some challenges in this work. So currently, um, yeah, CWP is, um, from what I understand, building fewer bio-retention at schools. Uh, they've already built fifty-five, I think, so, you know, a lot of those were the good sites that really could capture a fair amount of stormwater. So now, I, from what I understand, that slowed down a bit. So that means that, you know, the schools that already have, um, Clean Water Partnership facilities at them are the ones that are going to be treating and teaching at candidates in the future.
Yeah, the program is still continuing, we're doing about five a year, so I guess our rate probably has slowed down from the initial kind of push, but we're still continuing with the program.
About five a year?
That's where we're at right now, yep.
Yeah, it's good, yeah. But one of the real issues is that the school projects that are built through treating, treating and teaching must undergo DPI permit process. So that's really, um, it's necessary, but it has slowed things down considerably, as, um, many of you are probably aware, when DPI, you know, addresses small projects, sometimes, you know, they just really take almost as long through the permit process as projects that are significantly larger for many reasons. And then, for example, um, we had built some shade sales earlier on in the program. Currently, those really aren't being, uh, looked at for permitting, from what I understand. They do require, um, some assessment for the stress of the sails. They need to have significant, you know, some footers, so these are all things that have to be permitted and looked at by somebody, and so, you know, that takes a while, and so we've kind of dropped them for now, we're not really using shade sales. Which means that we're more reliant on trees for shading the outdoor classrooms, as well as all the other spaces at schools. So trees, I'm just going to spend my next few slides on trees, because I'm just a huge believer that trees are, um, such an important solution to so many issues with respect to climate, not just climate, but, um, air quality, habitat, noise reduction, and certainly stormwater, and then, you know, shade, just as far as comfort goes for the students, so there's, you know, how many trees can we plant at a school, you know, not, is not nearly enough, as you'll see, but any trees that we can plant are great, and the county already has a number of programs that plant trees at schools. But just to give you an example of the scale and the need, um, went back and looked at PG Atlas again, and looked at several schools with respect to the communities. Compared that to what the American Forests Tree Equity says that we should have in terms of our tree cover in our communities and schools, and for example, they have a goal of forty-eight percent tree cover in this part of Prince George's County. And I can give you the, um, I can give you the link to this in the chat, by the way. Which requires that I do more than one thing at a time. But uh, more often than not, the schools are tree deserts for the reasons I said before, because of the amount of imperious cover that's necessitated by building and programming, et cetera. And that's true, whether you have a community that has a lot of trees or a community that doesn't have very many trees, the town of Chevrolet. Town of Chevrolet's pretty much met their tree cover goals. Um, but as you can see, Gladys Film and Elementary School is, um, has far fewer trees than the rest of the, uh, surrounding areas around it. This is common throughout the county. It's really probably common everywhere. So we do have a number of tree planting programs, which are great. Um, the Department of the Environment has Arbor Day Everyday Program, which, um, schools apply for. Um, they have to, um, fill out a number of, you know, forms and, um, make sure their ducks are in a row, but they can get a program that uh, awards them trees from, and shrubs from the, um, Department of the Environment. And those are planted with the assistance of Neighborhood Design Center, Low Impact Development Design Center as well, um, throughout the planting season. Uh, we haven't been doing this for the past couple of years because of COVID, but prior to that, we were planting at least, um, probably six to eight, maybe ten schools a year. Treating and teaching, of course, we get tree planting as well as native plants, um, planted as part of the outdoor classrooms. Growing Green with Pride, um, every year. Um, for the past ten years, excepting for COVID, last year has been putting trees in the schools at a pretty good rate. And then the Arbor Day Celebration that, um, Dr. Goldson, I think, mentioned earlier. Every year, the county holds an Arbor Day Celebration, they try to hold that at the schools. When we do, we can get, um, tree planted for every classroom at the school, so that's an excellent program. So this is the kind of, um, numbers we're talking about. These programs have been in effect, some of them, Growing Green with Pride for ten years, we probably get close to ninety trees planted every year. I think in two thousand and eighteen, we had a hundred and twenty, almost a hundred and twenty-five planted last year, um, not as many. Arbor Day Every Day, um, when we're able to do it consistently, we can get, uh, fifty trees in a year. Arbor Day, um, County Arbor Day, you can get at least twenty-five, and so the total there is about a hundred and fifty trees per year. Which is, is good, but there's two hundred and eight schools in the county, so that's less than one tree per school, so can we do better? Yes, we can do better. There's some challenges to each of these programs, as I mentioned, there's some, um, some limitations in terms of applications, who wants to go through the process of filling out the paperwork and so forth. Um, often, our own in-house review process disincentivizes tree plantings for reasons that are kind of happen everywhere. People, often, there's just many reasons why trees aren't acceptable. People find that, you know, hey, they're messy, they attract squirrels or something else, they tear up sidewalks. Trees have, you know, bring problems, and that's a, you know, position that is pretty prevalent throughout the communities as well as, as well as, um, in the schools. And then finally, the DPI permit process, which is, um, it's been challenging to negotiate that, to say the least. So, for example, these are just kind of, um, an example of the type of reasons why we get that, uh, let's not plant a tree here, and some of them are extremely valid, we're going to have a temporary classroom going in. Um, you know, that's just a bad place, because, you know, we're going to do something else with that area. But we've heard a lot of different reasons, and this just gives you an example of, um, the kind of reasons why um, trees are not always accepted. So rather than fight these battles one at a time, what we were, are hoping to do is incentivize system-wide change, because that's really what's needed. Rather than, um, nitpicking about, you know, where trees can go on a particular site, or can we do this here, can we do that here? Let's have a system change that favors tree planting, that, you know, maybe puts a number on, instead of a hundred and fifty trees, maybe we have a thousand trees, maybe we have a big goal. And we see how we can support that through some more varied funding programs and incentives that we don't currently have in place now, but are doable. There's many reasons to do this, and so these are some of the considerations that we wanted to, um, we will be offering when it comes to time to designing our policy. So we have a guest today, Sadie Drescher from the Chesapeake Bay Trust, who can speak to us about some of the funding that's been, um, been being awarded to schools as well as other organizations throughout the county that incentivizes stormwater as well as trees. Sadie, take it away.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Marina, and I want to say thanks to everybody on the call, because out of all the things you've been doing with your time and so many pressures, just thank you for thinking about climate change and, and learning about stormwater and trees, and thinking about what can we do systematically, uh, throughout the school, so thanks for, for that. So I'm Sadie, I work at, uh, Chesapeake Bay Trust, like Marina said, and I know a lot of the folks on the call, so for those that don't know us, we're quasi-state organization and a nonprofit, and we focus on, uh, getting kids outside in a learning environment, so environmental education, community engagement and restoration, and we largely do that through grants and contracts. Uh, we have our own dollars dedicated, uh, largely through the treasure of the Chesapeake license plate, that pretty license plate with the, the Bay Bridge on it, some of that comes to us, but we also partner with a lot of other folks like Prince George's County, Environmental Protection Agency, Maryland Department of the Environment and others, whoever wants to do good work, money can come through us and we can do these projects together. So anyway, I'll put in the chat, um, you're right, Marina, it's hard to do two things at once, uh, art organization, if you don't know about us, you can kind of look around and sign up for our newsletter, because we do, once a month, kind of tell you what's coming down, down the pike. And again, um, I'm focused, we're on the restoration side, uh, but it was really cool to work with Prince George's County Stormwater Stewardship. We've been partnering with Department of the Environment for eight years, and so, uh, the county funds have come through the Chesapeake Bay Trust to really focus on restoration efforts, and then piloting different things that the county wants to try, like this treating and teaching effort. So it was really great to work with, uh, Eric's team and Ariel and Neighborhood Design Center and schools, and kind of say like, okay, how can we make this all work? And it's just been really cool to see what's possible and what can be, bring about systemic change. How can we kind of, like my husband says, uh, bring it down to where the goats eat the grass, he's like a union organizer, and really make it, what's, what I'm passionate about, I love stormwater, I could talk about it forever, but make it understandable, meet people where they are, whether it's the maintenance, uh, staff member, the principal, uh, the school board member, the student, the teacher, um, and make sure that we're speaking each other's language and kind of like extending that, um, and I agree with Marina, trees are such a great resource, um, that's something that we've been funding through the Prince George's County Stormwater Stewardship Grant, uh, Program and all of our, our efforts. Um, so kind of, uh, low cost, uh, good for the climate, all the things that Marina said, uh, but there are some challenges, not everybody loves trees. Um, so I do make a plug for that. Um, so that's generally, I wanted to say, we have a lot of grant programs, I don't want to take up a lot of time, uh, we're just really proud to partner with Prince George's County. Um, so we do have that dedicated funding that can be focused on school grounds. Um, in addition to some of the things you'll hear about today, um, Ms. Marilyn White has done a project at Duval High School with some of these grant funds from Prince George's County Stormwater Stewardship, um, and other schools, we have a list of all the projects and, um, some of the videos from some of the projects that have been done. Uh, so it's really great to see that, and, and I won't take up too much time, but we also have other funding sources from not only our dollars, but other, other programs, like, uh, we have a Green Streets, Green Jobs, Green Towns, um, program that's opening up probably today or tomorrow, um, and that's with funding from us and EPA Region Three, again, green infrastructure that you guys could apply for, and it does support schools. Uh, so just want to say that that's, um, we are a resource, and, you know, we're always available by phone or by email, we can do site visits. I was out on the eastern shore looking at a wetland site today, so we're happy, our team, uh, we have the expertise to help you figure out what might work best for you. Um, and, you know, it's just really important that we're all in this together and making sure that we're speaking each other's language and kind of like just energized about, um, what's the new thing we should be doing or could be doing? I was in a meeting a couple of months ago, or probably a year ago now, or a couple of years ago, before the pandemic, with Montgomery County, uh, Frank Dawson, he was like, what's the new cool best management practice in stormwater? And I was like, I still think trees are the sexiest thing around, just because I just think it's so cool and easy, and that fire attentions are wonderful, rain gardeners are wonderful, cisterns are wonderful, but trees are just so simple and easy. Anyway, that's my, my pull for that. Um, I did want to just mention the urban tree program, uh, the Maryland General Assembly has picked the Chesapeake Bay Trust to manage the urban tree part of the House Bill nine ninety-one, which is, uh, the goal of like five million trees by twenty thirty-one. Uh, so we're going to be trying to get five hundred thousand of those trees in the ground, and big shout out to everybody who helped get that bill, you know, we were just named in it, so now the hard work is trying to get the trees in the ground. So the intent for, um, the notice of intent to fund will be coming soon, and that'll be released. Um, schools will be eligible, and the bill specifically calls for a priority to be given for urban areas, which we'll be doing, DNRs, or Maryland Department of Natural Resources, will be doing the, um, non-urban area pieces, but in our part, we're looking for underserved areas as defined by, um, section eight dash one nine one one of the Natural Resources Article, Antetokounmpo, Maryland, all outlined, um, so looking to, to really look for, um, underserved communities to get these trees in the ground, and we just hired Greg Burks, who comes from Johns Hopkins University, he's going to be managing this program, and like I said, schools are eligible. So that's really all I wanted to say, I said I'll be short, but I think I went on and on, so I'll turn it back over to you, Marina.
Yeah, no, you didn't, that was great, thank you, Sadie. Yeah, this, the trees fund is, um, I hope that the school system can apply really as a system and not just as individual schools, I think that would be awesome. Because then we could really, I think, start to like, look at, you know, do this at the scale that is needed. You know, at least a thousand twelve, if there's five million trees, yeah, we should be able to plant a lot of those trees, I think, at the schools. Um, I think that I might only have one more slide. And, yeah, I can either talk about this now, or since it's sort of a natural segue, and I know Valerie is here, Valerie Woodall, yeah, hey Valerie. Um, Valerie, maybe you would, would like to speak about Mount Rainier as a kind of example?
Uh, sure, yeah, um, thank you, everyone, um, I think I'm supposed to share my screen, is that right?
Yeah, hold on, I'll, I need, I need to stop. I can get back to this. Okay. Oh, yours.
Yes, hold on one second. Slideshow. All right. So, hey, so hi, everyone. My name is Valerie Woodall, I'm the Mount Rainier Elementary School PTO Grounds Committee Chair. And I was asked to present just a few minutes about what we're working on in Mount Rainier Elementary School, our accomplishments, partners and what's next. So the Mount Rainier Elementary School Grounds Committee is comprised of parents, teachers, school administrators and community members. We are implementing strategies to make our school grounds the best environment for learning and beyond. And our goal is that our school reflects the arts community. It's located within meets and exceeds our goals for sustainability, active education, inclusion and more. So these are some of our partners. Obviously, we've had a lot of partners over the last couple of years working to implement the Neighborhood Design Center Plan. So let me talk a little bit about that. But thank you to all of our partners. So in 2018, the Neighborhood Design Center came out and worked with teachers, you know, everyone, to come up with a kind of comprehensive plan for the school grounds. They analyzed 14 sites and 53 pages of ideas were provided to us. And since 2019, we've raised about $40,000 to support this type of work. So our initial grounds committee focus was kind of the entryway infrastructure. What does the school look like and feel like when you come up to school and go home from school? Is it positive and exciting and sustainable and calm? And then also the sustainability of the school. So for example, in 2020, we became a certified Maryland Association of Environmental and Outdoor Education Green School. And we've been working on continuing to increase that sustainability ever since. So I'm just going to go through some of the work we've done. We did, we added signage, we fixed up the front tree box so that it's winter hardy as well as summer hardy. You can see some of our partners, we did receive a county redevelopment authority grant to help work on this kind of work. And school facilities put in a digital sign to help inform parents about what's happening at the school as they walk to school. We also added murals, footprints to implement walk to school days and murals to help, you know, make it look nicer. We added benches, bike racks. We wrapped the dumpsters with art that sit in front of school so that they're a little bit more beautiful. We've been participating in biannual walk to school days through the National Walk and Bike to School Day. But we also implemented walk to school Wednesdays, which happen right now quarterly after the PTO meetings every quarter. And we, we made the news in 2020, so that was exciting. This type of work also helps us to push the city of Mount Rainier to kind of continue to implement better and safer routes to schools, which is quite important for our community. And then we, we also participate with Neighborhood Design Center and the Prince George's County Growing Green with Pride events biannually as well. And so that helps with our certification, but it also helps continue to build community pride in our schools. So over, since 2019, I've tracked it. It's been about over 50 people that come to each event. And that's exciting. We've been working with the Tree Commission and the Green Team in the city of Mount Rainier as well. And then in 2021, Angela also, Brooks also came to, to visit, so it's cool. So now we're focused on outdoor education and stormwater management as a grounds committee. And these are just pictures of, you know, kind of what we've done over the last couple of months in terms of, you know, making it a better place for people to learn and teach in. So outdoor education at Mount Rainier Elementary School. So far, we have locations at the gazebo gardens, the top of the old playground, grade level tier gardens at the tiers and then pollinator beds near those tiers. And so this work has been supported by the Whole Kids Foundation, the City of Mount Rainier Recreation Committee, the Tree Commission, the Green Team and the PTO. And now the City of Mount Rainier has given us $20,000 to continue to expand our outdoor learning facilities. And then coming soon, talking about trees, we are working currently with the Tree Commission. So Mount Rainier is 46% of Mount Rainier. I'm sorry, Mount Rainier, the tree cover is covering 46%. That's our current level. We're trying to improve that. But so we'll be installing an edible forest garden between the tiers and the pollinator beds to help kids learn how to maintain trees and keep them small and, you know, do all the things. So that's cool. The other issue that we're focusing on is on stormwater. So Mount Rainier sits at the highest hill in the city of Mount Rainier. And whenever it rains a little bit, like for example, on the bottom left picture is the, it's just, that was a picture I took in Drizzle. So it's a lot of water coming off of the blacktop in Drizzle. But we're working to remove asphalt in front of school, thanks to Chesapeake Bay Trust, thank you, Sadie. And work to deal with the big blacktop at the top of school where we have recess to make that a permeable surface or to figure out like what kind of, you know, bio retention system we can have there to reduce stormwater coming off of the neighbors. And then the teacher parking lot and field behind school. These are all areas that flood and affect the building and the campus. So the next immediate step is to remove this asphalt right in front of school here. And you can see the water line up here. And then to reduce, you know, stormwater throughout the campus. I think, and then, I'm sorry. So, so the building, so this kind of work that we're doing in this little area can help build community support for bigger areas like, you know, removing impervious surface at the top of the school, the teacher parking lot and blacktop and potentially moving the teacher parking lot to the back field area where it's lower. And we can add, you know, stormwater systems there. And then continuing to create, to work on creative stormwater management and slope stabilization across the campus. So for example, this picture with the little tree right here was planted by the Tree Commission. So we're working hand in hand with them. You know, but all this work is, you know, helpful to have with Neighborhood Design Center coming out and making this big comprehensive plan that we could then chip away at and work with PG CPS facilities to do kind of bigger things potentially or, you know, continue to raise money to really get this project on. So this is what was envisioned as a whole. And I think that's all I have time for, unless anybody has questions. Cool, well, thank you. It's been a work of progress.
Valerie, that's awesome. You've been such a champion.
Well, I think you guys were here, you were here before me, I think.
All right, I just have one last slide. I'm sorry, Joseph.
I was going to say, do we want to get the questions soon as well from the worker?
Yeah, we can do that. I had that one slide to go on turf management. Do you want me to show that now or?
Yeah, that makes.
Okay. Okay, so, yeah, so one of the things I was asked to do was to look at turf management. Everyone was, I'm sure a lot of you were present for the presentation on why not to do artificial turf, which is, you know, sort of everywhere now, pretty much. But a lot of professional arenas are backing off of the artificial turf because of the injuries and because of heat. And their hot, hot playing fields and they certainly led to a number of injuries. So although the, I think the systems have improved, there are still reasons, you know, not to do it. So wanted to look at, if you didn't do artificial turf, what would you do? And how much maintenance would it take? And is it expensive? So I talked to the city of Hyattsville because I know what they've done there nearby. They've worked in formerly McGrudel, not Gruder, now David C. Driscoll Park to manage some of their sports fields, which flood consistently. They're in the flood plain. There's no way they're not going to flood. But the question is, can they both manage these with, with turf and also promote the drainage, which is really a challenge when it, when it comes to turf? Because turf, when it's used with sports, a lot of hard play compacts pretty readily and typically doesn't get the maintenance needed to promote drainage unless you have a whole underdrain system underneath the turf with soil amendments. So that's one way to go is kind of an engineered system with natural turf. But what Hyattsville did was decided to look at their turf as kind of a living system. So they brought in Osborne Organics to assess the soil biology. Osborne Organics came up with a recommendation, a prescription for an organic treatment that included molasses, kelp and, I think squid, hydrate, something like that. A few other things. So all organic, interesting stuff applied to the, the fields. They continue to assess the soil biology. The idea is the organic nutrients promote microbes, which then start to break down materials in the soil and keep it aerated naturally. But you still have to go in and aerate like four times a year, which is more often than most places aerate their sports fields. They're also making their fertilizer now. So you're able to kind of do some of this in-house. So that's just an example of what it takes to kind of move away from artificial turf, which although less maintenance, doesn't require mowing. It doesn't require, you know, soil assessments and so forth. But, you know, has the disadvantages that we heard about a few weeks ago. Okay, so with that, I'm going to stop sharing. And open it for questions.
And everyone can raise their hand if they have a question. And I will say that I, I think at some point, Dawn Holton put in the chat that she was, I guess she was wondering if, or if the stormwater issues, I think it was at Mother Jones Elementary, may have occurred because they, the construction occurred before the new Prince George's County stormwater requirements. And if that, those new requirements will alleviate some of those issues with the new construction that's happening in the future.
Sam, you want to take that one?
I'm sure that will help. The, the issue we have there is it was, it was the design of the facility. The way we designed that facility and we established a playground right outside of a open courtyard, which has a tendency to trap the water. So that was a design issue with that building that's causing a lot of the flooding out back, which over time has caused erosion because we could, we have a tough time getting, having grass grow there. So I think the new codes will help. But this was a design issue. And I think looking at it from a stormwater management systemically through what we, we looked at there was we were, we were trying to trap the water from the roof and from the parking lot. So we really didn't look at the whole site. We only looked at capturing where we were going to put impervious material, such as the roof and your parking lot, your sidewalks. We didn't take consideration the back of the school and the runoff of the school that was now being trapped by the building, which was, is causing us issues. So hopefully, the new codes will help. But it's a design, it's a, it's more of a systemic look at the design when we, when we, when we build facilities.
Thanks for the clarification. Any other questions?
Oh, shocking. We answered everything. Sure, that's not the case.
If I can, I'd like to make a comment. The one issue I have from a maintenance standpoint about planting trees is the haphazard way we do it. I get a call on Monday and they want to plant a tree next Tuesday. I have to check to make sure we're not planting it over the sewer system or have a water line there, gas line or cable. How close is it to the building? How tall is the tree going to grow? Is it going to affect the, if we plant it too close to the building or, or in an area where there's sidewalks, as they age, the trees tend to damage the facility. However, I do, we do have a lot of acreage that we're currently mowing that we probably don't need to. It's just over time, the community knows, sees this huge field and the kids may only use half of it, but they like that open space. And we've attempted over time to try to allow some of that space to naturally grow back. And we get a lot of pushback from the community. So maybe if, if we're looking to increase the number of trees we're planting on our properties, we look systemically at going in and maybe creating a forest and doing something. Because as we let it grow naturally, it goes through stages. And the first year or two, it's not very pretty. I mean, it's, the natural growth comes, the trees aren't tall enough yet. It just looks like it's overgrown. If we did something that would be a little bit more acceptable to the neighborhood, I would be, from a maintenance standpoint, would welcome adding trees to our, in our, on our property where we don't have a need for open field, for play areas. Because, because ultimately that's less, from, from a maintenance standpoint, that's less grass I have to cut. If a natural wooded area is one of the easiest things for us to maintain. So we, we would welcome a systemic look at planting trees, as you were alluded to earlier.
Yeah, Sam, that's absolutely, I think that's, you know, there's a consequence of, you know, these, these are great volunteer programs. They do tend to result in, you know, trees being planted a few at a time here and there. I think, yeah, we could do an assessment of every tree. And as you're saying, what's the most appropriate place to change the land cover? You know, from about the stormwater management perspective, maybe a cooling perspective, atmospheric as well as, you know, a use standpoint. And kind of to have those areas designated for future tree planting or, you know, meadow planting. If you want to go that route. I see a bunch of hands up now. All right. Pardon?
I said, I think Kate is next.
Thank you, Kate.
Hi, I was wondering, I, I, I don't know the most recent initiatives, but I know that MDE in Maryland has had fits and starts with their nutrient trading program. And has there been any alignment? Is that up and running yet? And is there any alignment between that and stormwater and things that PG CPS could do in order to get some income from some of the nutrient trading opportunities across the state?
I'm not aware that we're involved with that. My resident expert is not in the meeting today. She would probably, Sarah would be the person to answer that. I could find out for you. But I don't think we're taking advantage of that at all.
Thanks. I guess I have a question that sort of actually relates back to a picture that Valerie showed of some flooding that was in Mount Rainier. During that flood, our Public Works Department, it's always located right by one of the streams in town, and that could structure flooded. And as a result, we were out an electric code enforcement vehicle. So that gets, makes me just wondering about sort of how, how y'all are looking at stormwater from that other side? How it might impact different assets you have, you know, flooding into buildings, flooding into, you know, if, in an electric bus lot, for instance, if that, when that comes, sort of that perspective. I don't know if you'd have anything you want to talk about on that side?
Are you talking about the school facilities?
Yes, the school facilities.
We're actually, we just started a program. We went and invested and looked at all our facilities at flooding issues and identified 88 schools we, we think we have issues with. And we're in the, in the process of examining those issues with either current water infiltration or potential water infiltration. But that program is in its infancy. But we are very concerned about that, yes.
Thank you. And I think James is next.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. James Robertson at the Schmidt Center. So mine's a comment, not so much a question. I wanted to piggyback off the success that Ariel shared with the treating and teaching program and how that program brings outdoor classrooms to our older schools. One of the barriers around that program is that, you know, it only serves those schools that are inside the Clean Water Partnership. And we have so many schools that are not part of that partnership. And, you know, in my thinking, outdoor classrooms should be at every school and all students should have those opportunities to learn outside. So I would, I guess, put to the group, are there ways that either we can bring more schools into this partnership or outside of the partnership, go into these schools that need these retrofits for outdoor classrooms? As far as new construction goes, I know that, you know, outdoor classrooms are part of that design and planning. As far as new construction goes, I know that, you know, outdoor classrooms are part of that design and planning. But we've got so many schools that won't be undergoing, you know, rebuilds or major renovations for quite some time. So I'd put that to the group to think about, how do we service those schools that aren't in the Clean Water Partnership? And along with just the outdoor classrooms, you know, there's a lot of education that can take place, as Ariel mentioned, with our teachers and students around stormwater management. And they're not being served right now.
James, that's a very good point, but it's all driven by a funding stream. It's all, if, if a funding stream is provided, as you notice with the schools in the area, the principals and the, in the school community will take advantage of it. We need to develop a, another funding stream if that's, if we want to service those schools also.
Yeah, no, no, I completely understand. And maybe some of these trees that we want to plant will grow money on them. No, no, I mean, I understand, I know that there are limited funds. But I wanted to put it out there.
That's a good question. I mean, just to kind of speak to the C W P's perspective a little bit. Our partnership really is directly with the Department of the Environment and getting the county, you know, towards achieving its MS4 permit calls. So that's kind of our first mandate. As we've kind of evolved more, we've seen more opportunities for things that are kind of community assets, you know, not necessarily just stormwater management, but other ways to make positive impacts in the community. And so that's something that we've been talking to the D O E about to try to figure out ways that we can make other impacts. But as it is now, that's just not really our mandate to grab as many schools as we can. We've got to get impervious acres treated first, so.
And I saw Doris's hand up earlier. Maybe not. Oh, Valerie.
Hey, so I just wanted to just mention that the outdoor classroom that we set up only cost about $2,000 tops, I think. And we had a lot of community volunteers, but we, we didn't spend all that much money to set up a little outdoor classroom. It's not, it's not like the fancy ones or anything like that that other schools have. But it is, it's workable, teachers use it, students love it, community members also love it. So it attracts more kids as well.
Yeah, and stuff like that, to me, is really awesome. The story from Valerie there at Mount Rainier School, that everybody's kind of chipping in and creating their own ownership of that community and that school and that property. I think that's really awesome and the kind of stuff I really enjoy seeing.
Or member Boozer Stroud?
Yeah, thank, thank you so, so much. And thank you to all the presenters. And I did want to note that I'm going to put up the link, if you haven't seen it yet, the document that Mr. Robertson and Ms. Baldi have put together a couple of weeks ago. There's environmental literacy program that I got to attend as a board member. And we put the document up on our Climate Change Action Plan work group. And I want to make sure you have that direct link because it really brings it, brings it all together. And I want to thank both of them for their work and, you know, everything they, they do, reaching out to the school communities. And I, I think, you know, the, the, the one thing that does feel, you know, special about this work is that, and I think, and I, and I also am privileged to be part of the Mount Rainier Elementary School Community. And I can attest to while the, the dollars, we may not need as many dollars, but it is a commitment of people and of the culture of the school. And I'm hoping that we can reach every school by this through policy and particularly our students and staff who want to own this at each of the school buildings and that it's possibly, possibly could do a plan like Neighborhood Design Center did through another, you know, sort of train, train the trainer, you know, that we keep, you know, learning how to do this. And I want to say that from my vantage point as a board member, I would certainly love to see aspects of this at every, at, in all schools. But, you know, again, it has to really be driven by the school community. And I think that's part of our, our mission, you know, of the, the early years of our Climate Change Action Plan is building that excitement, enthusiasm of that we're in this together. So I certainly know I want to do my part in, in that. And, you know, specifically, I wanted to move to the question of trees. The one thing I, and I think this, you know, continues on what Mr. Stefanelle was saying is that, you know, we, the current trees that we have, we don't really have a tree care program or an arborist. And I, I, I think that, you know, that's when we get into sort of the school, schools as good neighbors. You know, we may have the trees right along the, the edges and they may be going into the neighbors' yards, but they're not well maintained. And, you know, that's something we also have to solve is our commitment to the, the care of these, of the trees moving forward. And, you know, and not just, you know, coming in and being kind of like a pepco of just, let's just tear it out, you know, let's just bring them down if they're causing a community concern. But I think we've all experienced in our neighborhoods, unfortunately, with that, the way of treating trees that way. And so I just wanted to, you know, to point out that I think we need that goal in there that we have to not just plant the trees, but we have to think about their health for a long time. And, and, and any, anyone who has thoughts on, on that reality from your experience of, you know, what we're going to do with the five million new, new trees, I would love, love to hear it. So we could have some really concrete ideas around care of the trees.
It's funny you should say that. I have one tree trimmer position in the maintenance department for the entire county. So that's, granted, I have a lot of people that are helping that person just to try to keep up with what we have. But we really don't have a program to deal with, especially the trees on the borders of our property. They're just left to grow naturally. And it's, it's, it becomes a challenge when they start to encroach on the neighbor's property.
I know Joseph had to jump off for a second. So just wanted to see if there was any other questions or comments related to stormwater and the discussions we've had today. Jamie Alston, I see your hand up.
I just had one just quick comment to add. When we're building the schools, one other thing that comes up to mind with regards to trees would be N A S R O, National Association of School Resource Officers. And in their planning, they consider sightlines with regards to safety of schools when you think about active shooters. And when we have participated as a school district before, we had the opportunity to walk around properties down in Peach, at schools in Peachtree, Georgia, and to identify areas, just as Sam has mentioned. When trees grow up so large and they block sightlines, it becomes a place for persons to hide out as they are planning, you know, active shooting types of activities and so forth. And a lot of the schools there in that area, like us, didn't have the funding to be able to keep them trimmed and, and so forth. So that's something else to consider, what N A S R O has and is called. It's nab, nab, tit, naps tit. I may have the acronym a little bit wrong, but it's all in their design. A group of us participated and it was very informative.
Yeah, which just points to the fact that the, our policy for, you know, we incorporate tree planting in our climate policy. We also have to have maintenance. And it has to be considered really in a, you know, for the life cycle of the tree as well as the life cycle of the school. Just what works best, you know, in terms of the grounds management as well as, you know, all these aspects of, of school use and maintenance. So it's really a comprehensive look, as, as Sam was indicating. Pamela?
Yeah, thanks. I'm going to jump, jump in again. Jamie, that, yeah, that is such a great insight, like everything that we have to think about as a school system on property. I, I had not thought about that, that aspect. And, and, and I think we'll be sure to make the note that we need to have those conversations with the security that everyone, everyone needs to, to, if they haven't been at the table with us yet, like the security department, we need to, need to make sure we talk to them. Let's not, not miss those opportunities. And I think, you know, that was a really important message from the meeting when we had our union partners. And I think Doris, Doris Reed, she's still with us, but, oh, I see Doris still here. But I think that's a great example of what, what she had mentioned some weeks ago. One thing I've been thinking about is, is there a conflict between trees and the installation of solar? I know that as a homeowner, I had wanted to jump into one of the, the recent community co-op type solar opportunities. And when I applied, I was told that even though our roof does not have shade all the time, I was basically told you have to cut down your two big old trees if you want to be part of our solar program. And I was like, oh, I don't want to do that. And so I moved on. I mean, what, what, what is that conflict for us? I mean, I think back to Michael's presentation on the solar panels on the parking lots. And, you know, one parking lot that I drive by and sometimes think about trees, but it could also be a solar lot would be like Largo, the front of Largo High School. When I'm driving down 202, I think, wow, that's a lot of some green space there that could have some trees, but maybe it should have solar panels. Or their thoughts on how we make those decisions?
We did have one group to come in, Board Member Boozer Stroud out at Crossland High School. And in the rear of Crossland, you know, where the bus lot is, they have trees behind that as well as residents. And that area could not be considered for canopy or other solar options because of all of the upgrowth of trees there and the different ages of trees. There were a lot of different types of trees that required a full assessment of that area behind Crossland High School.
Yeah, thank you for that example.
Yeah, yeah, this is Michael Harris. Yeah, I didn't make a comment about it. And in some of the, the sites that I viewed on Google Maps, I think, on the sort of spreadsheet that I presented, there was one school that I saw that I thought where the roofs were shaded. I mean, basically, you have to have typically in this hemisphere, you're, you're, you're southern exposure, not, you know, not covered by trees for the, for the site that you're choosing for your solar piles. You could have anything to the north a bit. Like I said, there was one school I looked at on the Google Maps that it looks like the, the roof might have been shaded on the southern side of it. But, but surely in planting trees, you can be strategic. And, you know, that, that, that should not, you know, stop one from planting trees. You just have to be more strategic. There are so many different things you have to look for from listening to this presentation. Whether it's the under, underground sewer or the, or, or the, you know, some, you know, the discussion we just had about active shooters, what, you know. But just with the solar in particular, that is why they typically look for where the shade is coming from.
All right, great, that, that's very helpful. I appreciate your perspective that we, that this doesn't have to be in, in conflict, that we can do both. Thank you.
One quick question I had was, I know we're, we're running short on time. But, you know, Valerie was mentioning that, you know, it really takes, you know, your school community with limited funding and volunteers to get all of this done in a reasonable timeframe. Don Holton is just mentioning that there's requirements related to, you know, the type of trees, the, where they're planted and things like that. And then, and then Board Member Boozer Stroud mentioned that there's not an arborist and there's not a lot of maintenance support at the PG CPS level. So I guess my question is, who do you turn to when you're trying to decide what type of trees and where to plant them on school grounds? Where do schools start and where do they go for resources?
There is a guide that is provided by the county government that lists the different types of native trees, shrubs and things like that for this area that we require our design teams to use to, to populate their landscape plans for our new buildings. So that, that's pretty much where we, we lead everybody to start is with that guide that comes from the county.
Yeah, but in terms of citing Kate, as you, I think you were alluding to, goes back to what Sam said, that, you know, every school, schools could be systematically, systemically kind of evaluated and assessed for where the appropriate places to plant multiples of trees might be. And that has to do with, you know, lots of things, slopes, sightlines, conflicts with utilities, but also where they're most needed for stormwater management. So there's, there's really some ideal places to do these and some less than ideal places.
Just to add to that quickly, when schools come to the Schmidt Center and they want to do tree planting projects, we will point them in the direction of county government, specifically the Department of Environment, through their Arbor Day Every Day program, which offers free trees and the expertise to come out and look at the property. And then they go through the kind of the authorization process through Sam's office. So everybody's kind of in alignment. Now, it, it can be a lengthy process, but everybody is in alignment. And it usually, it works out well. But it's not putting, you know, coming up with the idea and planting a tree the next week. It's a little longer.
So, Marita, do you want to wrap us up? I see it's five o'clock. And if you want to sort of make some closing, closing remarks on this, and, and I'll just announce that, you know, we meet again on December 15th. We're getting into the, the drafting work and you'll be, all the committee members will be receiving e-mails about subgroup planning. And, you know, I just want to give my personal thanks to all of our special guests. This has been really enlightening. And I just feel like I've given much deeper knowledge about the great work that PG CPS is already doing with all of our partners and with all of your help and that, that we've learned so much that we could, this could be a really strong aspect of the plan and moving forward that we could get to pretty quickly. So thank you all so much. But I will hand it over to Marita and make some closing remarks on our, our topic for today.
Well, that was what, pretty much what I was going to say, Pam. So thank you. Just wanted to thank everybody really who took the time to participate and offer their expertise. It's been invaluable. And just to say that there are some great programs that we're, you know, we're already doing for the schools and we just need to do more of it. We need to find ways to incentivize these through different funding sources. But most importantly, I think there needs to be, you know, kind of a knowledge academy, because we've lost a lot in terms of how we steward our landscapes in general, as well as our trees that are going to work for both our people population as well as our species population, as well as solve some of our functional problems such as stormwater. So that's something else that's needed, the knowledge academy. Anyway, thank you all very much. It's been enlightening and I think we're in good, good stead for our policy work.
All right, great. Well, thanks, everyone. I hope you have a great rest of the week. And of course, everyone is welcome to, to view our meeting next, next, on the 15th or watch the recordings. And then all of, everyone is going to hear from us around review of the plan. So this isn't, this is, if this is the first time you've been with us, it won't be the last because we'll need you in the drafting process. So, all right, thank you all so much. Take care.
Bye, thank you.